Sorry folks, I was having a technical glitch as I was starting here. I'm gonna wait a minute or two. Just to make sure we have everyone here. Am I frozen now?
No.
I feel like I'm moving. Oh, you're frozen. Sometimes I just stop moving and then I look frozen. So I think we still need one more person for quorum to.
You have six members on your committee?
Five. So we just need three, yes?
I think three is the forum.
Okay, we do have quorum. Alright, um, well, in the interest of time, let's uh, let's get things rolling. I see Haley's here. I don't see anybody as of yet from the the building committee, buildings committee, but we will see how this goes as we start. So I'm gonna call this meeting of the Chutesbury School Committee to order at seven oh four P M. The first order of business is public hearings. We do have a few members of the public here. Does anybody want to make comments to start off the meeting? Okay. So, uh, hearing none, we're gonna move on to the review of the agenda and perpetual calendar. I'll let you all review the agenda at your own convenience. Um, in terms of the perpetual calendar, um, we will be talking about initial budget stuff, uh, this tonight with Caitlin. We're supposed to be finalizing and submitting capital needs to the town committee according to, uh, last year's draft of the calendar. School councils continuing to work with a school improvement plan. I know that there just was a four-town meeting. That is on this list as well, and, um, the union budget is also, um, being presented and discussed at this current time. Is there anything else that should be added on to that that I have missed? Okay. So I don't, okay, problem of approval of minutes is after warrants tonight. So let's go to warrants.
Alright, so I have four warrants, two accounts payable, uh, ten seventeen from November thirteenth for twenty-five thousand one hundred eighty-one dollars and forty-seven cents. And ten eighteen from November twenty-seventh for forty-two thousand twenty-six dollars and eighty-nine cents. There are two payroll warrants, three oh nine from October twenty-seventh for ninety-three thousand one hundred twelve dollars and fifty-five cents. And three-ten from November tenth, uh, for ninety thousand one hundred seventy-four dollars and seventy-nine cents. I believe there was a gift on the agenda. Is Anne here to talk more about that, or I can just ask for approval of the?
Sure, we have a, um, fellow who's local, you might know him, John Zeb, and he would like to, um, continue to donate and a gift annually to students to encourage them to go and enjoy the Quabon as he did so for many years as a child. So, uh, we ended up using the funds last year to go to a, it was, I think it was five hundred dollars to cover the buses for the students to go watch the, um, trout fish that be launched at the, um, at the Quabon. So we were able to take first graders and, um, kindergarteners. And then we had some money left over and, um, Laura had reached out and said, do you want the change? And he said, no, you can take it on another trip. And he was so like enthusiastic about how honest everybody was, and he got some great messages from the students about, um, what a great trip that was. So he would like to continue that every year and to give us five thousand dollars earmarked for the, um, for the kids to Quabon program that we're gonna be starting, so.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Might be cool to go down and watch, watch the eagle count or something too. I mean, there's a lot of stuff that we probably could do with that.
As long as it's not the same time as they release the fish because the kids.
No, it's not, it's not. It's, it's when it's iced over usually. But yeah, no, I'm just that there's a lot of interesting activities that we could, that could probably be, you know, um, encouraged with that. So, so we just have to vote to accept it. Is that correct? Okay, so, uh, we need a movement. A motion.
So moved.
Alright. Thank you. Uh, so all in favor, my UI?
Long goodbye.
Jack eye.
Heard eye.
Alright, it's unanimous.
So we also have a couple of grants to receive. There are Rural Aid for sixty-three thousand eighty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents. The Chutesbury two forty grant, the IDEA Individuals with Disabilities and Education Act, uh, for forty-seven thousand nine dollars. And the two sixty-two grant, which is IDEA, but early childhood for two thousand six hundred and fifty-six dollars.
Alright, so we need to vote to accept these as well, folks.
I move to accept the grants.
Thank you, Anna.
I second that.
Thank you, Nate. All in favor, my UI?
Long goodbye.
Jack eye.
Heard eye.
Perfect. It's unanimous. So, uh, moving on, we have the approval of minutes from October sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. I hope somebody looked them over. Well, because, uh, once again, I had to create them. So we'll need, uh.
I move to approve the minutes.
Thank you.
I second that.
Alright, all in favor? My UI?
Long goodbye.
Jack eye.
Heard eye, sorry.
It's alright, so it is unanimous as well. Okay, so moving on to unfinished business and updates. Uh, I did invite the building, uh, committee here. Frank had said that he would be attending. I do not see him here. I do, Haley, you're here somewhere, I think. Yep, um. So, I mean, I guess the discussion that we talked about, the reason that we had invited the, um, the buildings committee was because, um, Anna had attended a select board meeting where the building committee was airing some of their frustrations around the heating system at the school, feeling like they were out of, uh, that we didn't reach out to them or that it wasn't, we weren't making um, the nature of things, um, which of course, as an independent committee, we're not really the select board. And like, I mean, really the place to come and do that is here. And to talk to us about that, um, but I wish this was happening separate from ongoing issues with the heating system. Um, I wish that, you know, all of the work that we did to try to, uh, that we tried to kind of fix last year, um, was the last word on this, and it's not really. But I'll, I'll kick it to you, Nate, to start off with, just in terms of the general capital projects and building process stuff that we have going on and the, the answers you've got, and then we'll move on from there.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot, um, just, uh, as a timeline. Um, just to kind of put things in perspective, so we got, I believe it was the end of May, Anne received a large, um, bill. That was kind of the big red flag. It was like a thirty-four thousand dollar, um, bill and June tenth, I believe it was June tenth, Anne and I and Haley met to discuss this. And then June fifteenth, we had a inspection, which we were able to get Stephen Dalamis on board. So that's a two-week period between the time that we found out about the major issue and getting the buildings committee involved. Um, so just to put that in perspective. Um, I'd like to talk about, um, you know, I went to the, uh, the capital planning committee, I gave them kind of a rough idea of what we are looking at. Um, we're gonna put in a request for, uh, tractor, a new tractor. We are also looking at that twenty-four thousand dollars for sidewalk repair. Um, originally, we had kind of thought that that money could be used to deal with the planning of the driveway, um, but in lieu of all the complications of the oil tank, um, and there is a section where the preschool, uh, is entering and exiting, um, school that is really torn up. There's a bike rack that's really torn up. I shared these pho- photos um, with the capital planning committee. And we all kind of agreed that that money should be spent, um, as it was intended, which is to repair the sidewalk. Um, so I need help. Uh, I reached out to Haley. Um, we need to find someone to, uh, do that repair in a reasonable way, um, cost-effective and in a smart way rather than kind of piecemealing it. Um, and so we need to find somebody, um, and somehow to, to do that, to jumpstart that. Um, I also reached out to like, to Furcog to talk about the larger, um, driveway issues, um. So we, and they recommended we um, reach out to an engineering firm. Um, an engineering firm can give us all the kind of, um, that's the information we need before even getting a bid. The three bids that are required for the capital planning, um, thing. So we need assistance, um, from the town, town admin, from Haley, from whoever we can to find, uh, a good, reliable engineering firm. And that, um, to kind of get this moving, I'm, I'm sorry that Frank's not here because I feel like the oil tank is a major issue with that. Um, and understanding the, the lifespan of that oil tank and whether that's gonna be taken out. And it's gonna be part of the new driveway. There's also the issue of a, um, thirty thousand gallon, um, water tank that the fire department needs to install, that needs to be done before any paving, um, is, uh, is done. That's, uh, I think they have the money set aside for that, but we need like coordinating all these departments. Um, and getting everybody on the same page and working together. And that's kind of a little bit beyond my capabilities, um.
So coordination on finding the funding, coordination on organizing this, this project, the parking lot, oil tank, water tank that requires multiple departments to be on board with timeline and coordination, like that's beyond the scope of of us. And so we need help with that. Um, I think Nate, correct me if I'm wrong, and Anne, the last time we met around, or the last time I was with you that we met, um, around the, the oil tank, wasn't what we were told sort of that like the underground tank, a tank that big and an underground tank is not what they like to do anymore. That really, we kind of brainstormed the idea of putting a new tank over where the sheds are. Um, because what they really want is an outside of the building above-ground tank, uh, for oil now. Um, so it is possible, I mean, the removal of the tank in the driveway and the reinstallation of a tank won't necessarily be an oil tank going back into the ground under the parking lot. In fact, hopefully it won't be.
Right, and they also explained it's that journey that the oil has to go in from under, underground where, um, you know, it has to get pumped up and go into the room. The, all those pipes are really, um, they're original to the, to the system. That makes it a struggle, and that was where the water was getting in and we were having those issues with it clogging the, the components that the oil would go into, then go into the machine off of. So I'm not explaining this well, sorry. I, uh, but that was the recommendation that we did a smaller tank that was outside of the, a lot closer to where the, um, the controls are.
Yeah, um, I guess as part of this conversation, I mean, well, I guess we should have this sep- separate conversation. So the parking lot, we need coordination in funding and, uh, bidding. And then organization to get all the departments that need to be involved, involved. Um, Suzie, I see your hand. And, uh, and then I do want to talk as well, Anne, about what's been going on with the boiler since we last met. Um, go ahead, Suzie.
So another aspect of it, when you talk about engineering, is also design, because it does sound like, I'm not sure the engineer figures out. Um, some of the changes will happen to the parking lot if the oil tank's not over there. And so there's, you know, traffic issues and how you make that work better. So there's a, a design element as well as an engineering element. And, and the better that's done upfront, the better it'll turn out in the end.
Absolutely, absolutely. Like I said, I reached out to the Conway, uh, school landscaping to try to get, uh, um, them on board, and that would be another thing. It's to, you know, I've, I've tried to contact so many people. I don't know what it is. If it's just me on the phone being like, I'm from the school committee, and people are like, yeah, no, I'm not gonna talk to that guy. I don't know, um, but nobody's calling me back. It's really difficult. I've, you know, I've heard it with contractors in general right now. It's just hard to get anybody to call back, but I think that those two things, a landscape architect, engineering firm, coordinating with the buildings committee on whether that, because that could be a hundred thousand dollar plus, um, tank removal. Um, just to deal with that, you know, so there's, it's a, it's a big expense. I think in the capital planning, we kind of threw around a three hundred thousand dollar if you're including the oil tank, um, thing. So, you know, it can be very costly, um, so.
Well, and it, you know, I guess, yeah, that's the thing, right? If we were just repaving the parking lot as it exists, we could just call up three paving companies and ask them to give us a Yeah. a, a bid. We could fix the side. Are, are we talking about still fixing the sidewalk just with the money that we have? Yes?
That, yes, that's.
Have we had anybody, have we had anybody look at that yet and give us a bid on that?
Nope.
Okay, so we need to get bids for the sidewalk, which might be somewhat within our purview, right? So Haley, in a second, I'd love to hear, like, how do we go about doing the, uh, getting those bids? And are there contractors that we're supposed to, um, reach out to that are, have some sort of arrangement with the town? Um, and then the second thing that we have to figure out is how to fund and then, um, process the planning and design for, um, the removal of the tank and the parking lot. Go ahead, Suzie.
I, I feel like, um, there has been a past practice, and it wouldn't have used the school committee as the driver or designer or, um, mover of this project. It would be that the school committee would identify to the town administrator and the buildings committee what issues are at hand, what solutions they're looking for, and then they step back. And the building committee, the capital planning committee, and the town administrator start working out the picture, the, the, um, the details of the picture. The finance committee would be part of it, but they come in after the capital planning committee begins to say what it is. So I feel like it would be frustrating to be a school committee member trying to drive this train. And I don't think, um, if, if every department had to do it on their own, they'd end up with different, um, contractors and different things. That's not how it's been in the past. So identifying what you feel the needs are, um, knowing that you are representing some of the other things you've heard that'll happen on the grounds, like the fire department tank, that all gets represented to, um, the town administrator and the building committee and the capital planning committee. Um, it could be changed. It could be looking for something different, but that's been the path that people have used in the past.
Yeah, that's what, uh, the Furcog, um, expressed to me, that that was kind of the thing. Um, there was also.
It feels like Nate has been doing it like a six or seven months of running around trying to get answers. And has struggled mightily to get those answers. And then at least recently, it feels like there's been a little bit of blowback as if we weren't communicating properly, but we've been trying to be very transparent with the needs that we have and trying to figure out who has these answers. So, um.
Exactly.
Do you have any insights on this? I was gonna ask Haley if she had insights as the town administrator for us here.
I can definitely offer a few things. And definitely thanks to Nate and the committee for kind of spearheading this initial step. You know, I, I'm still pretty new. Um, so I, I don't always have that historical context. What I kept saying is I really like working with committees directly. You know, it's one thing for me to go and talk to the Furcog on your behalf, but it's another thing if I have a connection to somebody on the committee who can be more, who could help inform me so that when I take that next step, I have all the background. Um, you know, with regard to the building committee, you know, they're not here and I'm not gonna speak on their behalf, but one thing that did strike me is I said, well, is there a past practice of, do you meet with the school committee? Do you meet regularly with, you know, the fire station, all these different buildings in town? And that didn't really seem to be the case. And that's certainly something I think that we could be more proactive on as a town, and I can certainly take the lead on making sure that happens. Because if we were regularly meeting, presumably some of this wouldn't have been delayed until this point. Um, so I just want to make sure I'm understanding this clearly. So you're, you're kind of you're set with the sidewalk funding in that you already have it. You're just looking for people to do, what is it, concrete?
Yes.
Okay, so that I can look up, um.
And again, great, that's awesome. Um, we might want to check in with Matt Foster because he did mention, um, that blacktop might be a better solution than concrete. So there's a section that goes towards the back of the school that's all the blacktop pavement, and then it kind of melds into a concrete that's corroding. So we might want to talk to Matt to see what is more. He has better expertise and experience with that, what's durable, but I can, I can get that from him.
I know one of the issues is salt gets away at the concrete in a way that it doesn't at the pavement.
Yeah.
Does that affect the price then? Like, would you be looking at more money for the, I don't know?
I don't know.
Okay.
We have twenty, twenty-four thousand dollars, seems like a lot. The last time we had, uh, the sidewalk fixed, uh, they spent nine thousand on it. Um, so I feel like we have more than enough to do this and even have some set aside to jumpstart the next project if we need to.
And asphalt is usually cheaper than concrete, which is why lots of, like, Greenfield has been replacing more and more sidewalks with asphalt. And just keeping the inner district concrete for that reason.
Yeah, but right now, what needs to be repaired is cement, is concrete that has been chipped away at. Yes. Um, Furcog did mention with the oil tank at least, that there are grants available and that there's somebody, uh, I've reached out to them as well to get more information, their grants available for dealing with that oil tank, whether it's removal or replacement. So we can also look into that for funding.
Yeah, I think, um, there might even be some options through our insurance company, depending on how it would impact our policy. So that's something that I can look at too. You can help to do that. So with the, with the bigger projects, you know, I think you know, the first step is finding the firm, because we don't, we won't really know how to best coordinate all the departments if we don't know what the game plan is. The, one of the firms we're working with right now, I don't think they do this type of work, but I can check. Um, did you, do you know if you talked to Laura Phelps at the Furcog? Is she your contact?
Yeah, yep.
Yeah.
That's her.
Um, so yeah, so I can go to her, actually.
Yeah, I asked, great. I asked her, I haven't heard back from her. I asked her about like engineering firms, recommending firms and stuff. So hopefully she'll get back to me.
There's also a small town administrators network, so they may have some ideas on, I'm sure this has come up, you know, in the past. So if it sounds okay to you guys, um, you know, I'll work with you on getting the, the firm identified, so that then I think everything else will fall into place in terms of progress steps.
Perfect.
Um, I see, lots of hands up. Leah, Caitlin, and I think I saw Shannon too.
I did, but I think Caitlin might, I'm, I'm, I'm hoping Caitlin's gonna ask the same thing I was asking, so I put it down until after she goes.
Um, and my, my question was just around, um, so is the the removing the oil tank work, is that related to like heating and cooling? Because I did, um, receive a recommendation for a potential um, contractor, uh, that's local to Western Mass. It's, it's Western Mass Heating and Cooling. Um, and it was from a, another local business. So, um, I, I just wanted to offer that up as a, another con- potential contractor for heating and cooling work.
I fully support that.
Yeah, thanks, Leah.
Yeah, Western Mass Heating and Cooling, um, the lead guy is Scott. He's really nice. Um, uh, they're very responsive. I can't say the, the, the cheapest organization, but they're, they do good work, is what I would say.
Caitlin.
So we've worked with Furcog, with, uh, Laura Phelps in the past. They've been amazing, super helpful. Um, but they are looking for projects right now because soon their deadline is, and then they're totally focused on highway. So if we want to get a project going for, um, for the the pavement for the, the driveway, then it would have to be soon. And we would have to get a designer out pretty quickly in order to make that happen. But I'm confused about the water tank and the fuel tank. Are those two separate projects that have to happen before the design work for the? So we.
No, it can be part of the design work. I think the, the, the concern and the thing that's been holding us up for like three years is that it has to be court, like, we need to get that. We only recently, I think in the last year, really realized that going forward, we would not be leaving that oil tank there, and it has to be taken out. But we've known all along that when we do the parking lot, the fire department wants to come in and put in a water tank for the fire suppression system. So it doesn't have to be part of the only part that has to be part of the design is knowing where the tanks, like that one tank is coming out and going away, and we have a plan to replace it, and it happens during the season that is most advantageous to that. And to know where the water tank is supposed to go, so that that can be worked into the plans, um, that can be worked into the plans. Like, I'm no expert, obviously, but like, one thing that appears that comes to my mind right away would be would it be possible to take that tank out? And as long as we have that excavation and we've cleaned that excavation, could we then put the water tank in where the oil tank has been and just minimize, you know, excavation and all the rest of it? Um, but again, that's, you know, that's.
Ten thousand dollar, ten thousand gallon, uh, oil tank in a thirty thousand gallon. I mean, it's like a, it's like a, it's like a fire pond kind of thing. You know, it's like a ice skating rink kind of thing in the back. You know, like seriously.
Chutesbury Swimming Pool in the summer?
Right?
So I think, uh, reaching out and finding a designer for the project would be the first step.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then once we have the design, then we can put it out for a bid. And I would love to use Furcog as a resource because they've helped us a lot in the past and, um, we can move forward. So I guess my question is that up to the town or the school to find a designer for the parking lot?
No, no, I'm happy to take the lead, but all I, all I was mainly asking for is if someone can just be like my go-to person. Like, if I have a question, what is? Yeah, so maybe Nate, you and I just should meet a little more regularly.
Absolutely. I'm here, I'm here for it.
Awesome.
And, um, it's your point person, Haley, but if you have, if for some reason you can't reach Nate and it's something time, like just, I'm also available should you need me.
Okay.
And I'm probably, I'm way below Nate, but I'm more involved than probably the, the other members so far in the, in the school committee. Suzie?
Um, I just wanted to mention that the select board, when they did talk to the building committee, um,
Um, began to formulate the idea of having a preferred vendor list of for preferred contractor list. So you could suggest to them that they um consider Western Mass Heating and Cooling, but it it looks like. Um, they wanna be the um, they wanna be the start. They don't want each department to find their own contractor or their own, so that's why Haley would be the center of those things. And it would be good to suggest Western Mass Heating and Cooling, and if they move the tank and the piping has to get changed. I'm sure the piping part is gonna end up being a contractor like, like Western Mass Heating and Cooling. So there's different parts to this project. It's quite a lot of coordination and um there'd be be different people involved in. All parts.
And the other thing that we were told uh back at one of the points we were meeting was that, you know, part of the problem with the tank. Was that, you know, Jamrog didn't install it, it predates them, but nowadays, a lot of times, the people who fill the tank or the people who install the tank are the people who are responsible. For the upkeep and the checking of the tank, and so that might be a time where we want to make sure that we have our kind of vendors in line. Um, and we know going forward what that responsibility is. Um, so is there, I think we're pretty clear now on sidewalk and on parking lot, yes? Haley's gonna take the head on that. Okay, so then the next thing. Yeah, thank you so much Haley. Uh, I think.
Thank you.
The other thing that we need to talk about a little bit here and uh, you know, even in the absence of the building committee. Uh, maybe we could fill in people on what the status uh, what's going, so. For those of us who kind of remember this, like last year, we took care, we know, once we figured out that there was water and we figured out how water was getting in the oil tank. And we dealt with that and we dealt with all of the, you know, Jamrog coming up repeatedly with multiple people, multiple days in a row. Burning through those uh, those, I always forget what they are, but the jets, the flares, the the. The pieces of the boiler that were getting fouled by the water and the oil, we kind of thought that that and that we kind of fixed things. Um, but as the heating system has started up this year, we're now having. Well, first off, last meeting, we talked about the fact that they didn't drain the water in the inside tank. When they cleaned out the outside tank, so there's still water, so that fouled the nozzles again. And now we're having issues with one of the boilers, um, and and maybe you could pick it up from there and kind of tell us what's been going on the last month.
Sure thing. Um, so we, originally, we had reached out to Jamrog just to remind them that. Before heating season, we were gonna need to turn everything on and make sure it was running. And then they had said that, well, there was a secondary tank that needed to be drained and it wasn't drained when we did the water. When we got rid of the water from the main tank, so, which was surprising because they were there when that had was happening and I'm surprised they didn't say anything. But um it made us kind of go without heat for quite some time at the beginning of October. And I think, I think it's October fifteenth or seventeenth that we have to have the heat on, is that right Shannon? Beginning of October, so we were really calling, cutting it close on that deadline because we still, we didn't want to run the system. Because we knew that those filters would get clogged if that water with the oil mixed in it was in a another place, so. Long story short, um, they need, still needed to clean that tank out, which they did. And then they, we've been playing a kind of a a game of of wait and see with different parts that needed to be ordered. Finally, um, Shannon actually called them and spoke with the, with the person that was in charge of it and said, he said that he would come in and install it himself. But then it would be another week that he would come to actually um upgrade the system. We were running with just one pump. For several weeks, we still are at a spot right now. We don't have um everything up and fully running, but we have it running enough. That we're able to um, that we're able to heat the building. So um currently, the air handlers are not working. This is the thing that blows the air and the heat through the school. It makes a clicking sound and uh I talked to Matt about the original company that put it in. And it's possible to get a contract with them at six thousand dollars and they will come and go through the entire system. They're the ones that are in charge of the controllers for the boilers and they would do a whole diagnostic of everything that was wrong with it, so. Um, hopefully predicting some of these things that keep happening. So um Matt let Jamrog know that the belts and that parts of the air handlers aren't working right. And um, there is some damage there, so. Again, it's a, we're waiting for the response from Jamrog to see if um, what's what the next steps are gonna be. They said that we're um still waiting for the left boiler, for a sensor on the left boiler, the right boiler is working, but also waiting for a part. And um. It's really disappointing and it's, and it's really like I've also, I have a doc, if anybody's not shared on it that wants to be, let me know. I've attached the most recent Jamrog bills and it's uh like thirteen hundred dollars for certain parts of what they've just done. I mean, it's totally eaten away at our building maintenance supply, ma- maintenance line, which is really a healthy line. And it's, it's uh, it's, it's really kind of maddening. I mean, I'm sure Nate, Nate can also attest to it that. The, the process of, of all the things that keep going wrong with the system is just, it's really um a sad waste of time and effort and energy, so.
And money. Uh, Anna, I saw, and then Nate.
Yeah, so I, I don't, I, I, it's incomprehensible to me. That they can keep charging us money to fix their mistakes and I don't know how we can fight back to. Make them actually fix their mistakes on their own dime instead of charging us for them to fix their mistakes. And do the work three or four times that they should do only once. So what's the next step in trying to recoup that money?
It's a good question, Anna. I mean, I, I think I do want to. Not all of this is like necessarily mistakes, but there is a, a, a pattern of sort of lack of responsibility. Lack of like, smart decision-making that we're a municipality and a school, not a private company that has like money to spend on this. That like, we have a fixed budget that we can't just be blowing, you know, we can't just be handing over our maintenance line to Jamrog every year. To fix the same things over and over again, even if they're not mistakes, like, okay, what's causing this and let's deal with that? Or who's the person that's supposed to deal with it if not you and getting that done so that we're not just sending them a monthly check? Um, that's the part that I feel frustrated about. Uh, Nate, Suzie?
Yeah, yeah, um, I, I was there recently and um, there was a smell coming out of a. Can you talk to that? And then there was also an issue with the misreading of the amount of oil. In the tank, I think Matt said that he had wanted to order six thousand gallons and. Filled it up and they only put in three because there was, it wasn't reading right.
The floater was off, yeah. So that was another thing that they have to look at is the actual internal components of that oil tank. Because that wasn't working. It's similar to some of the other issues that we discovered after they took the whole top off of it. That there were other issues where there was a sub-pump that was supposed to be working and that wasn't working. Um. It is really, it's, to say that it's frustrating isn't even accurate. There's gotta be a better word for how this has been going down and. It's so unfortunate that we have other things that have to get fixed, like we had um part of the, the soundproofing that fell off, down off the stage. Just from wear and tear that we need to look at and the main door that goes in and, you know, people use it hundreds of thousands of times. It's the original door to the building. And we looked at just replacing the components. They don't make them anymore. We're gonna have to replace the front doors. And it just, like money that we could be using for that, it just keeps getting eaten up because we can't open the doors if we don't have the heat. So, sorry, I mean, I will officially get off the soapbox, but this has definitely been a, a big struggle.
Okay, um, I think it was, no, was it Suz? No, Nate, I don't know where we were at. I know I said Suzie and they, I now see Haley, so um.
So my suggestion is to ask um Haley to talk to the select board about getting the town council. To read, find out what's been going on and write a letter and have her um step in. To help represent the town in this um, in this situation. So um, it would be the select board asking the town council and Haley can go through that process. Um, because it does seem like there is um, getting a letter from a lawyer saying, these are the issues we see. This is the problem and maybe she comes up with the um solution, I don't know, but I, I feel like it shouldn't just be. Um, administrators tearing their hair out. It should be that, there should be a hammer here. And I, I think the town should represent this as a legal issue.
Nate and then Haley, I guess?
I think Haley was first.
My small screen.
A really stupid question, but why are we, why do we keep going back to Jamrog?
That's an amazing question and we have also dove deep, but come to find out, there aren't a ton of, of companies that are um. That will handle the heating and the, it like all of the pieces that they handle. And um, I think there's a word for that. I want to say Jeremy monopoly, is that what's going on? Well.
Yeah, the problem that we've talked about is you need to have somebody who has the wherewithal as a company to come out in emergency situations. Which of course, like just listening to you Anne and like the fact that, you know, the guy's gonna come install this piece, but he can't do it for a week. I don't really. Less and less seems like that's the case that the, you know, that we're really on a, on a rush here, the parts here, but they're gonna, it's gonna be a week before they can install it. That seems like that kind of throws that theory out, but the idea that there's enough people that can respond in a, in an emergency situation. And then also that piece that we've talked about before where, and I thought there was some conversation, I think initially when you, Haley and Nate met. And there was some movement earlier in the, at the end of last school year with these frustrations of trying to see if there was something else we could do. But it doesn't, there really are not a lot of companies that will support um, like the whole town. I mean, that's really what it is. It's not just our building, but it's this idea that Jamrog, you know, contracts with Schutzeberry. But I also feel like that kind of monopoly doesn't really keep them maybe thinking about things.
Not competitive.
Should, yeah.
Um, so Shannon, you said that you spoke with someone at Jamrog. Who was that person?
You know, I'd have to look on my notes because that was during, I was out at Schutzeberry and Anne was trying to make some calls and like, this is enough. Um, and uh, I do have the, I'll have to look, I just, I don't have them handy. I didn't know that that was gonna be needed, but I did write it down. Um, and I, I think to the point like, why do we keep using them? Trust me, we would love, I don't want to say. They are very responsive as far as when you call, someone is going to answer you and that doesn't happen. It, when you call, as Nate talked about trying to give people to even return phone calls. Um, they are pretty responsive. It just, the frustration for me, and I don't have the technical ex- expertise around it. But it seems to me that for the money we have spent, you know, my husband always says nickel and diming a project, right? Like, we could have, I, I don't want you to just keep fixing it, right? Cause they come out and they fix it and it's good for a few weeks and then we have another problem. Even if it's a terrible amount, I want to know what it is so we can stop, you know. Just um doing this like little patchwork projects and what is the root of the problem? What is the plan to fix it? Is, are they capable of fixing it? If not, where do we go to get it fixed? Because the amount of time that Anne, who is not a facility manager. Is spending trying to navigate this is, it's outside of the scope of her job. It's unfair for her to have to do and I appreciate that she's dove in and done it. And our, our, our head um facility person, he's not an engineer and he, we have spent a lot of our budget. That is for maintenance for the projects that keep the longevity of a building going and to be good stewards of that building. We've been siphoning it to fix these projects, which means the projects that they're intended for, like. We gotta paint this room, we've gotta fix this, you know, patch this part of the floor, aren't getting done because heat trumps that. Um, and so we're putting in, trying to be good stewards and put in a fair amount of money that is not exorbitant. And we just can't predict how much it's gonna be. Um, and a lot of those maintenance projects that are true maintenance projects are getting pushed. You know, the cans getting kicked down the line a little bit and. That is going to impact down the line, the longevity of the building. So it's like this vicious cycle. Um, and to have the town be a partner in that would be really helpful. I mean, we'll certainly do our part, but. At this point, it's really getting beyond the scope of what our skillset is, just to be perfectly frank.
Well, the reason I asked is, I think it's worth having a conversation with someone from Jamrog before a lawyer sends a letter. I agree. To just say, look, this is, this is it, you know, if there's not some action taken, then we are gonna go to that next step. So if there's a good contact for me, that's all I need.
I will look back and forward you who I spoke with, whether he's the right contact, I can't tell you, but he was the person in charge. And I don't even remember what my note said about that. It was the number Anne gave me and Anne was like, I'm gonna get back on the phone and I just said, no. I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get on the phone and you go do like principal stuff.
It was Jason at Jamrog.
Oh, there you go.
I've got him on speed dial, so, yeah. And I really appreciate that Shannon, because I think Shannon saved me from a uh.
I didn't feel that that conversation was gonna be productive based on where Anne was at.
Yeah, thank you very much. I really appreciate that. You're, you're accurate. That's accurate, yeah.
All right, Nate, finish us out on this topic.
Yeah, I just, uh, I just wanna second what Shannon said and I really appreciate everything that she just said. Um, and uh, I wanna appreciate Anne's hard work and that's kind of the idea of getting. Asking Haley to come to this meeting, um, trying to get uh Frank uh in buildings committee. Just so you guys can understand what we, that we've put forth, a really. Strong effort to try to resolve these on our own and it's, it's bigger than, than our committee can handle. And we need some assistance. Um, so, yeah, and thank you.
Well, I know I speak for Shannon too, when I say we really appreciate all the work that you've done Nate, like you really have been a hero for Schutzeberry Elementary School. We greatly appreciate it for sure, cause this has not been an easy road. So thank you so much, honestly.
Welcome. That means a lot. Um, I did want to say that uh, as far as the door, I'm gonna put the door uh, that I think that's around five thousand dollars. That's kind of the cutoff for a capital planning, so I'm putting that door uh, uh, on the capital planning. Um, request as well, so.
Awesome.
We can try to get that. That's probably uh the most used door in all of Schutzeberry, so.
I think so. We got thirty-three years out of it so far. That cost is um over five thousand dollars for all the new hardware and stuff, so. Yeah, that's accurate. That sounds great. Thank you so much.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you Nate. All right, so I guess uh, we can move on from that. Haley, thank you for attending. You don't have to stick around for the rest. You're welcome too, but um, I appreciate you being here and, and, and.
Yeah, no, um, it sounds horrible, so I can only empathize with everyone and um. You know, we'll work to ratchet it up and hopefully get some concrete movement.
We'll reach out to the business committee again about trying to get them here so that they can, we can hear their concerns and maybe develop a better way. At least in the short term of communicating with them. Um, but the one thing I, I do want you to hear too, just as the new administrator, because we don't have. I mean, on this committee, I think Anna and I are the longest serving and we're both in our first terms. Uh, there's a lot of turnover in the town, obviously, in town government and we lose a lot of institutional. Knowledge, which is why it's always nice to have Suzie here. Um, but I, you know, we really did reach out to building. I mean, Nate really went to building committee, went to capital meeting, like we have talked to people as these things came up. Um, and in the end, we just talked to finance committee and we tried to shoulder it on our own last year in the hopes that it would be seen as, you know, us trying to take care of our own. Stuff and not burdening the town, which was already sort of burdened. Um, but you know, now, now we're out of, we're out of options and we have to figure out how to make these.
No, I appreciate that and I think for, you know, for whatever it's worth. When I started here, it was really apparent that people are in silos. So I'm also happy to invite the building committee to meet with myself and other building owners. Um, school included, if that would be helpful, maybe sometime in December, we could get that going and just make that like a quarterly or something thing. So that we're not feeling surprised on any end.
Yeah, I like that idea as well. So thank you very much. Uh, Shannon.
I was actually just gonna say, I'm wondering if you want to switch and have Caitlin go before me because it might be helpful for Haley to hear the.
Oh, yeah.
And I know, listen, I know you don't want to be here. You've had a long day, I get it.
So yeah, you're gonna stay, Caitlin's gonna talk, I'm gonna go, um.
You know, it just might give her a little, how we present the budget, a little preview, because I'm sure we're gonna be having lots of conversations around the budget. Coming into this next year, and so it might be helpful for her to just listen to that piece and. She doesn't have to stay for the rest of it, certainly, and you don't, it's not, I can't direct you to stay, but I'm wondering.
Oh, no. No, I'd be happy to.
All right, so then uh, let's move on and we'll start with reports and we'll start with uh Caitlin with the director of finance report.
Sure, now I'm gonna um scramble a little bit. Actually, it says sharing is not turned on. Um, am I able to share the budget or do you?
You should be able to.
Hold on a second. We've changed, what do we have to change the setting every time we get in here?
Um, I'm not sure. Usually it's Google Meet.
Right. I'm going to send you all to a breakout room. Just kidding. Oh, here it is. Okay. Find it. It says that you can share. I'm just going to put multiple participants can share at one time in the hope that that fixes it for you. I could also.
I think it did fix it a little bit. Um.
Okay.
It's a little, hang on, let me see if I can get to the document I want to share. I'm going to start with the budget and then go from there, but I gotta. We don't use Zoom very often. Oh, there we go. I think I got it. All right. Do you see the budget?
Yep.
Great. So this is our level serviced budget, what we have contractually agreed to for any salaries and, um, what we have right now and what our additional needs are around facilities. So this is going to be a little bit of a, a price shock. Um, right now we're at a 6.32% increase and we've realized that is not where we want to land, not what the town can handle. Um, but level serviced, that's where we are right now.
What were we last year? Just as a point of reference, three?
That's a great question. It would, it'll take me a minute to answer that if you want me to do that right now.
Don't worry about it right now. Sorry.
Okay.
It's that column.
And then total school funding. So the town appropriation, 6.32%. Uh, school choice looking to go down a little bit more because our school choice is, uh, I think about 112,000 and we're still over dependent on it. We're, we're hoping to close that gap a little bit. Just a tiny bit every year, $7,000 this year. Uh, for rural aid, our rural aid amount came in less. Uh, from what we budgeted to what we were given this year, it's less. So we budgeted 75,000. We were given a little over 63, so we'll have to budget at 63. Um, early childhood revolving fund stays the same and other grants. Grants and circuit breaker are circuit breaker. We will receive some. And that's why that's gone up, but that's only because our expenditures are also up. For administration costs, uh, we have a three-year audit. So every three years we have to do the audit of the end of year report. And we're up for that next year, which is why that had to be included. So instead of having it budgeted every year the same, we have two years off, one year on. So we're able to take it off for two and then come back and we will need to, to budget for that audit, that audit. Most of the rest are Union 28 lines. Instruction lines. So bigger increases, uh, office machine maintenance, that's a laminator, copiers, postage machine. Those tend to go up every year and we need to kind of account for the increases. For principal professional expense, those are the dues, conferences, PD, like for those and the ones for Union 28 and ones we're finding across the board, those dues have increased. Uh, teacher specialist, regular ed salaries line 35. The reason why there's a bigger increase is because part of that's grant funded and grants have stayed stagnant or have gone down. And so the operating budget portion of it seems bigger because it's trying, it is, has to accommodate for all of the increase that doesn't happen in school choice or other grants. Inclusion specialist, we had a, an amount that we were spending on a contract, the contracts ended. We've absorbed some money in, um, for BCBA services into line, uh, 39 special ed contracted services. But it still has decreased. Therapeutic services, same thing. Some of that is school choice funded, school choices going down a little bit. So the operating budget has to accommodate more of the increase, which is why it seems like a larger increase than expected. Line 42 para educator salaries, that has gone down. Uh, we've, there's been a reduction of one unfilled para educator position. Uh, I think the rest is grant funded at this point. Professional development line 46, that is anticipation of losing title grant funding. Line 70, um, special ed transportation, that's gone up significantly. We have a need for special education transportation. For line 76, school power. It has stayed the same, even though the amount is higher, we're funding an additional 15,000 by rural aid. And for building maintenance, also an additional 5,000 by rural aid. But one of the biggest ones is for line 95, special needs tuition, non-public schools. We have some funding from circuit breaker and from IDEA, but that is still a significant increase. So for the town, for the school, it is the same, same problems. We have revenues that are going away or they're dwindling, they're, and we have expenditures that are increasing. So for title one, we are budgeting the same amount. For title four and title two, those probably will not come in. We won't receive those funding. IDEA grant, we have budgeted 47,000 uh, for the out of district tuition and then another 2,500 for early childhood. For the REAP grant, and this is the one that I'm a little cautious about because it, it is a federally funded rural education assistance. We are still budgeting $18,000. We don't have any direction on whether we're going to receive that. But I would rather budget as if we're going to receive it. And if we, um, to take a little bit of the burden off of the town. And then if we don't receive it, we will look at other avenues to, to fill that gap. Instead of trying to add that to the town before we have any, um, idea whether it's going to be available or not. Circuit breaker, out of district tuition to public schools. Circuit breaker is funny. So the way circuit breaker is, you, um, for any student, you have to, um, spend about $54,000 and then circuit breaker recover about 75% of what's over that. So that's a, that's tricky because, um, that changes, it might be 54,000. They may change it completely the next year. We're not really sure. And 75%, well, they could change that too. We're really not sure. Um, but because it's based on the year previous, so it's based on this year. We're still unsure of what that expense will be for tuition, for transportation. And so is this, at this moment, and we'll have more, uh, direction next meeting, the meeting after, the February meeting and so forth. Um, we'll have a better idea of it. This is a very rough ballpark of what we would be receiving in circuit breaker for next year. For rural aid, uh, it has decreased. So we budgeted $75,000 for this year. We received, I think 60, I think, well, you approved it earlier in the meeting, I think like $63,000. That has decreased and we will have to decrease that revenue in our budget. Early childhood would stay the same. And for school choice, we've budgeted 138, 84. That is, um, still more that we're using than we're anticipating receiving. Uh, we don't have the cherry sheets out for FY 27, but, um, for FY 26, we, we are only receiving about $112,000. So we don't want to exacerbate those funds so that we are overusing what we're receiving uh, every year over year. I think we have enough built up that we can slowly dwindle, we can backed up to what we're actually receiving. Um, we don't have to do it all at once, but we do need to back off from using those revenues. So questions on the budget. I can keep sharing it. I can bring it back up.
Uh, Nate, you have a question? Then I have a question.
Yeah, um, on the, can you talk about that non-public tuition expense that went up significantly?
That was my question. Let's see. Yeah. What's the total on that out of district thing? Again, I missed.
What is that about?
We don't know exactly, um, because it hasn't begun yet. And so those are still some of the things in, in flux right now. Uh, but it's looking at about $163,000 a year.
Okay. So that, that could end up, I mean, that is a, in addition to the, the cost of everything going up, that is a substantial part of the jump in percentage this year. Yes? I mean, I don't know what that works out for. I don't know what percentage that works out to, but that is a, you know, if that is, works out the way it's working out, that's a non-negotiable thing we are on the hook for that has nothing to do with budget and spending and a, and planning, like that's outside of our control. Yes?
Correct. Correct.
So to make sure that everyone understands.
And what is that?
So that happens and I want to be sensitive in how I, we're a small town and I want to respect people's privacy and, and all of that. Sometimes there are students whose needs we do not have the capability to meet so that they can meet the educational progress that they're entitled to. And so we have to look for out of district placements for them. Um, and they are expensive, um, and transportation to them, the facilities are expensive. Um, it is not something that, um, as, as Jeremy said, this is part of our responsibility and it's um, part of the responsibility of, of a student in our community. And we're not able to meet their needs at our local elementary school. And so we have to find a way to have their needs met outside of here. So I, I, that probably was not as, as, um, transparent as you'd like, but I.
No, no, that's perfect. That's.
In a sensitive way.
That goes to the idea of, um, having paras um, in classrooms being less expensive. So we're paying a para to shadow.
Sometimes we can, yep, sometimes in, in, we can add things to our budget to bring in extra services so that a student, right? People, we, we want students to stay in their home community. Families want students to stay in their home community. But sometimes the expertise that is needed, we just cannot offer. Um, and so when that happens, we have to look at what does the child, child need? And we, we're obligated to get them what they need.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Sure.
And I think I just want to add to that. That was kind of what I was trying to say is that like, as we start to wrap our head around the budget and that, you know, if, if, you know, and of course Caitlin will try to work her magic and get that percentage down, but at some level, you know, on the school committee, our job is to say, well, this is a fun, this is what, this is, this needs to happen. Like there's no, this is not a negotiable sort of thing. This is not something that you can plan away. Um, it's just the way that this goes. And so, um, just to be aware of that. So, uh, I think it was, I don't know if it was Anna and then Suzie or Suzie and then Anna, but one of you can go.
Um, I'll, I'll take it. I'll take a shot. Um.
Yeah.
Um, first of all, non-public tuition is also called out of district placement. So, um, sometimes we get so many words going, we've, we lose track. So that's, it's an out of district placement. And I believe we had one in FY 26. And is this a new one or an additional one in FY 27? So will we have two or one in FY 27? Uh, do you want me to speak, Anne? I don't want to over speak for people.
No, it's one. It's just one.
Okay. And then you said that the tuition would be 163K. Is that what you said? And the circuit breaker says we pay 54K and they pay over it, but the money doesn't come in, in the same fiscal year it's spent. Okay. So we would front the 163, but some circuit breaker is coming in from the FY 26 current year we're in. And, um, so there's some sort of net number here. And you, and you won't know exactly what it is because you don't know the real cost of the tuition or the transportation, or whether the state changes the formula, but is there a ballpark of what we're doing?
Yes. So we have a ballpark. So for, let's say for this given year, we have, there's two types of circuit breaker. There's extraordinary expenses and then there is a regular circuit breaker. The extraordinary expense is if you have something come up mid-year, which we have, then we apply for it in March and we receive funding in May to help support this current school year, which we plan on doing. Then there is the regular circuit breaker where we say, this is what we spent last year. And then you will give us funding for the following year. And that's the one that's going, it's tricky to understand because we don't know the exact amount. We don't know the dates. We don't know how much. So we're having to budget this early with not a lot of understanding about what it's going to be. But you spend the first 54,000 and then they'll give you 75% back. After that, you get into a better groove of understanding what is spent every year. And circuit breaker keeps up with that much better. So, um, this is a tricky point with not having clarity on, um, expenses, on timelines, on everything. So this is an early budget. We are, this is our, the best we can do right now to explain, to, to have numbers. But those numbers will probably change in the next few months.
I know I was shocked to hear that, um, when a kid goes out to a charter school, um, the district pays. And if that kid washes out of that charter school and returns to this, to the original school, sending school, the charter school gets the full year tuition from the public school. Any luck on circuit breakers? Do we get to have all the money if things change or does it go another way?
I saw that.
No is the answer, I think.
Yeah, I think the answer.
Because circuit breaker, really you're getting money, you're fronting the money.
Yeah.
So it's not like, you know, you go to a charter school, it doesn't work out, but you were there October 1st. So we've got the year, you've already fronted the money.
All right. Yeah. Well, this, these are all topics on the, um, push right now, the MTA letter, which people signed. Um, all of FinCom signed it. Um, hundred, uh, 1,078 signatures on that MTA letter. It got delivered on, um, November 18th. And, um, the FinCom is working to keep the town informed about what's going on and we're going to try to get some postcard, um, postcard drive going, because these are such serious financial issues. It's not about this person that needs out of district tuition. It's about the funding formulas that we are all being crushed by right now. So, um, maybe I. It's about the funding formulas that we are all being crushed by right now. So um, maybe I will, um, if I can get the postcard process going, um, I'll bring it to you. Um, and there is going to be um, a public event at the Leverett Library on December thirtieth, which is a Saturday from one to two-thirty. And Joe Commerford, Natalie Blay, Jessica Kerwin, uh, Corwin, and some other people are going to come. And it's, it's like the alarm, people need to know. Um, and getting people to show up at these events and feel inspired to act is where we're at. Cause this, this is, I looked at this budget and thought, it isn't us. This isn't our problem. It's a funding problem, not a spending problem.
And, and as Caitlin said, this is our first rough draft, but we recognize, right, everybody is stressed because the pie's only so big. And um, we recognize that, we want to be transparent. This is not adding any positions. As a matter of fact, it's not really even level service because we didn't fill an open position. So we're trying to be good partners. Um, some of our fixed costs have gone up, you know, dues, we, we have to be members of, you know, associations and the dues goes up. Um, so, and we have some contractual um, responsibilities with, with COLAs. So this isn't the finished product, but we want to be transparent and say, this is where we're at. If we were looking at, we just want everything to say status quo, this is what it would cost to do that. Um, and so we're just trying to be proactive and transparent and, and let people know where that stands. And Caitlin and, and Anne have done a lot of work around. We have had several budget meetings already internally. And when I say we have looked at every line, there is not a lot of fluff in any of the Union Twenty-Eight budgets, to be honest. But um, I would say, and Caitlin, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think Chutesbury is probably the tightest because we recognize as a municipality, your budget's very tight. And we, um, you know, it's, it's not personal, right? This, you hire us as educators and this is what it costs for us to give you the product that you're getting, right? And then as taxpayers, you'll have to decide what, what, we'll run it with what you give us. But you're getting a really good return on your money, right? I mean, your school's getting recognized at a state level for such a small school, they're getting recognized for performance. But that, that comes with a price tag and, and this is the current price tag and, and we'll operate with whatever you tell us. But this is what it costs to provide that.
Thank you, Shannon. That's good context all around. Anna?
So I just wanted to follow up on what Suzie said. Um, I, I actually went to the listening session that Desi held at um, Greenfield and testified with a group of regional school committee members and Amherst School Committee members and Amherst Town Representatives. Um, so Chutesbury's, his voice was heard at that listening session. Um, so I would actually encourage as many of you as possible to bring your friends and go to the Leverett listening session. The one that I went to was hosted by Desi and this one I think is hosted by Joanne Commerford and her friends. Um, but uh, this is all about uh, marshaling support for and encouraging our representatives and the government to rethink the formula and funnel more aid to rural and um, small regional schools. Um, there's a lot of broken parts to the funding formula and getting them to look at it again and try to create a funding formula that works for all of the schools in Western Massachusetts, as well as all of the schools in Boston, um, is really important. Um, my question, it may be more for Anne, but um, maybe Shannon as well. Um, so school choice is always a portion of our budget. I'm wondering if how much room we have for accepting school choice students and how many students are applying to be to enroll at Chutesbury that we turn away each year? Like, do we accept almost everybody that wants to come here or are there excess numbers of students who want to come that we turn away because we just don't have the space for them?
It really just depends on the grade level. Certain grade levels have more open seats than others. And um, if you know of any students that do not want to send their children to middle school next year and want to come to us, we will have um, some spots that are open in our next year's sixth grade. So spread the word. I'm happy to as well. Um, so it really just depends on the, on the grade level. But we have not, I think that the only time we've ever turned away is really um, is um, preschool. Because we don't have, um, we have one, you know, we have one preschool with multiple opportunities for students to attend. But um, just that, I think that was and, and I think there was a time where there was um, we didn't have any spots in a couple of the grade levels. I think it was fifth grade. And um, fifth grade last year might have been one. I'm not sure off the top of my head, I can go back through it, but
And preschool's not eligible for school choice funding. So that would have to be a tuition and, that we're not able to claim school choice for preschool.
Right.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, so thank you very much Caitlin. Thank you, everybody, for the conversation around that. Um, sorry, now I'm just looking for our next piece, which would be the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Haley, for staying for that. Didn't make you go to bed feeling any better, but um,
Yeah, it's gonna be great.
I do appreciate you hearing the context of it.
Um, okay. So wait, I have more to my report.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
It's okay. The extension report, you can review it if you want your own time and that um, we can talk about next month when we have more clarity. But I do want to talk about our twenty-seven payroll planned for next year. So there are each um, salary employee, hourly employee is broken up into twenty-seven, twenty-six payroll checks through the year. But there are more than fifty-two weeks in the year, by like a day or two, depending on leap years and such. And so what every school district needs to do, um, every eleven-ish years is to reset the payroll calendar. So uh, we have, we are up for that. We're actually maybe a little bit past due for that. We need to reset our pa, our payroll calendar. And all the documents are linked in my uh, director's report. But I'm going to pull up one in particular. And that is the twenty-seven payroll period for a ten-month employee, but I've also linked in for twelve-month employees and so on. So normally twenty-six paychecks. This year for FY twenty-six, the first payroll was on um, eight-twenty-eight for a ten-month paycheck. Uh, ten-month employee. And then that will end on eight-thirteen. If this employee was making, let's say seventy-five thousand dollars top step, there's no um, step also on top of COLA. So for FY twenty-seven, their paycheck, their first paycheck will be on eight-twenty-seven. This will continue to get earlier and earlier unless we reset it, which is what we need to do now. And then if we will need to go to twenty-seven paychecks for FY twenty-seven instead of to FY twenty-six with a three percent COLA, which is what most Chutesbury is. Uh, that will change. Hang on just a second. That will decrease every paycheck by a little bit of money because it is twenty-seven paychecks instead of twenty-six. However, with twenty-seven paychecks, now we have reset the calendar to September ninth. And then it would be the normal amount of increase and going forward for FY twenty-eight. So there are a couple of ways that districts can approach this. They can either skip paychecks every eleven years or so, or for some regional school districts, every six years. What we would like to do is to go to a twenty-seven paycheck calendar for FY twenty-seven. So that uh, we are able to kind of reset it. And here is the schedule going forward. If for FY twenty-six, our first paycheck was on August twenty-eighth. For FY twenty-seven, it'd be on the twenty-seventh. And remember, it would continue to go further and further um, earlier and earlier if we didn't reset it. But by resetting it now, we'll go to September ninth. And then it will keep going early and earlier until FY thirty-five. And then we won't have to do it again till FY forty-six and FY fifty-seven. And I know, Jeremy, you've been through a couple of these payroll uh, resets where weeks are skipped between paychecks.
Yep.
This is our attempt to um, instead of skipping because of municipal districts, you can't skip one week. You would have to skip two. So would have to be an entire month between. This is how we would like to remediate the situation by having a twenty-seven paycheck scheduled for FY twenty-seven.
Yep, um, Anna?
So this is probably a stupid question, but is there a reason we can't pay on the first and the fifteenth? Instead of every two weeks?
That's a good question. Um,
We'd have to redo our CBA though, because our CBA says that they get paid twenty-six. Um, our collective bargaining agreement says that they get paid in twenty-six installments.
Yes, that's still twenty-six installments.
But I think for regional school districts, that would be fine, except that because we have three municipal districts, including Chutesbury, we have to stay on their payroll schedule. So when we'd first ask, could we just skip a week? They're like, no, because, not your district, but a different one. No, because we do all of the town employees on the same payroll schedule every other week. So we can't be not in line with theirs.
Well, maybe we should go to all the other districts and all the other towns and suggest that if you just pay each, pay people on the first and the fifteenth, you still have twenty-six payments and they're very regular. They're twenty-four. Oh, they're twenty-four.
That'd be twenty-four. Cause there's always two months that you have three paychecks and the health insurance works that, yeah.
Maybe you should just ask everyone to deal with twenty-four paychecks and do it twice a month instead of every other week. It seems like less complicated.
I will say
Okay, never mind.
As a teacher, starting out those years where you miss a week and it's usually like the week right before school or like, it's the first week of school or it's like, you know, it's like, I just remember one time in particular when I was first starting out, like how incredibly stressful that was. Cause you just made it through the summer and you're ready to start getting paid again. And they're like, oh, actually, no, we're skipping a week and you get paid, you know, the next pay period. It's like, that's, it's, it's a, it's a lot of stress for especially teachers that are just starting out. Um, Suzie?
Does that affect the health insurance?
It doesn't because the health insurance is taken out two pay periods per month. So it will continue to be the same. If there was, um, and we've talked a lot with school committees, with um, the accountants, treasurers, unions. Um, there were, there were questions about like, well, what if we just did a skipped payroll? Could we not have the health insurance? Like, no, it would just double up in that one paycheck you had. So health insurance, just, you know, two paychecks every month. So it'll stay the same.
Anna, did you have another question?
No, I just didn't lower my hand.
Caitlin, do you have any more good news for us?
So I'm not asking for any action tonight. My, our, our plan for every district is to present this to, well, we started with uh, the town accountants, the treasurers, and then the school committees so that we talk to you first. And then um, emails to the associations and the members. And we're trying to be really proactive about this. It won't take effect until for a few employees in July, but most not until September. So we just wanted to um, give everyone enough uh, time for questions and for uh, dialogue before this takes effect.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay. So next would be uh, superintendent's report.
I, you have the report. I'm not going to read it all. You're certainly able to read it, but I am going to just highlight a few things. Um, a, a, as you heard, the um, other schools within Union Twenty-Eight were able to get a PRISM grant because they all have to use the same ELA um, uh, curriculum. And part of that came with some coaching. Um, we were able, um, Lindsay reached out to Desi and to the vendor and we were able to get that coaching um, and um, classroom visit um, collaboration to include Chutesbury, even though they are not part of the grant. Um, so Anne has been able to be a part of the principal work. Um, we've been able to go into the classroom and look um, for high, um, even though it's a different curriculum, um, looking for um, give feedback about practices and all that. So that's been uh, really nice um, collaboration for us to be able to offer Chutesbury. Um, the other thing I wanted to point out, I know Anna talked about the um, chapter seventy listening sessions. I did link, um, I submitted testimony. Um, I, it, I linked it so that you can read it. Um, I went last Friday to a superintendent's roundtable and they were having a joint um, presentation by the head of MASC and MASSS. Um, and they were very frank about the listening sessions are a listening session, but um, they're being, the listeners are from Desi and Desi does not set the funding formula. And so we have to really be active with our legislators um, about changing that formula. And to be clear that it is not a quick process. Um, if they decide, we have this listening session, then they have to have a committee. The listening session report isn't even going to come out until the summer. So then they're going to hopefully vote to do a committee and they'll do a committee study. So you really are, we are looking at several years out if they decide to fix it. So just um, I think it was a little eye-opening to all the superintendents who are sitting there thinking, oh, you know, maybe in two years it will be different. It's probably i, in their opinion, and you know, they said it's not binding, but just their expertise. They felt it was going to be a couple of years out. Suzie, I see you have your hand up.
Yes, and I think that rural aid is the, is part, a much better part that's at hand. It could happen now. They just have to say, yes, it should have been sixty million. So I think people do need to push on that because the formula is a long-term problem, but the rural aid is right at hand.
Mm-hmm. And that is, um, you know, we did a lot of um, uh, lobbying as um, educator groups. And not only did we not get the sixty million that the um, independent study said, this is what our rural school needs, just to keep pace, because we're not getting Student Opportunity Act funds. That's largely based on enrollment. And so this was supposed to be the leveling field, you know? Um, not only did we not get the sixty million, they cut from what they gave us last year, which really felt pretty disheartening, um, to be honest, that not only did they not hear us, it was kind of like, Anne, we're going to take a little bit from that. Um, and they are collecting more revenue from the millionaire's tax than they expected. So they took in more and gave less to um, education projects. So um, I was, you know, as Suzie said, I think that that is a quicker fix. Um, and we really have to be relentless in those efforts. Um, and that being said, more good news on the legislative front. Yesterday afternoon, the, and I linked this in my report. It was a new edition because it just came yesterday afternoon. So if you read the report prior to yesterday, you might want to go um, look at that Google Doc, because I've added some links. Um, uh, the US Department of Education informs state educators, um, leaders, um, our lead agency, so that would be Desi for us, of their intent to transition the management of several major programs to other federal, federal agencies. This is clearly towards the administration's very public goal of closing the department event. Um, the announcement states that the majority of programs currently managed by the federal office will transition to the US Department of Labor. Um, these programs include Title One, Title One A, Title Two A, Title Three A, Title Four A. Um, and the McKinney-Vento Homeless Act, among others. Right now, IDAA is staying um, in the Department of Ed, as is the Office for Civil Rights. Um, so I've linked um, that. It's very new, just came yesterday. Um, we got a letter, superintendent's got a letter from the commissioner um, sharing what he knows. Um, and much of this is cut and paste from exactly what he shared. Um, we don't know a lot about what that looks like. We have already been told in multiple circles, as Caitlin talked about in her report. We are not going to be getting some of the federal funding. That is just not going to happen. We are really hoping We are really hoping that we hang on to the Title One. Um, but we're already anticipating that we are not going to have two and four. Um, which doesn't seem like a lot of money, but in a tight budget, it is money that we have to make up and it creates that, you know, when you lose sixteen thousand towards professional development, we're still obligated to provide professional development. So that's sixteen thousand that we have to add into our budget. That is, is part of that increase that you're seeing. So I've linked those there. I'm happy if you want, have questions after, reach out to me individually. I'm happy to answer those. I don't want to make it longer than it needs to be and, and you can all read, so um I, I want to um be timely with that, but those are sort of some of the highlights. I wish I had more exciting, better news to give you, but that's what I've got today.
All right, Anna.
Is this a place where we can reach out to places like UMass, Amherst, uh, and ask them to help with professional development? I know they have programs um that could be useful. Um, I don't think Amherst College is as helpful in this respect. Because it's mostly undergrad.
Yeah, I think what we need to remember is they're a public institution, so they're facing cuts also. So they might not have as much flexibility. Um, UMass actually reached out to area superintendents about how to build that collaboration. And superintendents have been meeting, um, area superintendents from Franklin and Hampshire County have been meeting, um, they met once in the spring, once in the summer, fall, to try to look for ways to build that collaboration. I think everybody is facing professional development needs, so certainly that might come up. Um, I, it has not come up yet. So that, that's the only answer I have at concern. I think everything's going to be, going to be looked at. But some of the things that we need to provide professional development around sometimes are very um tied in with our curriculum. And that might not be something that UMass can really fill that, that gap. Our professional development budget is pretty tight here. We do a lot in-house. Um, we put a lot, principals lead a lot of professional development. Um, Lindsay leads a lot of professional development, so we keep that pretty tight. Um, but there'll be some expenses that we have to um, have to build into our budget.
Yeah, this, UMass, because it's located in Amherst and because we are part of the region, they may be more inclined to help towns that are associated with the region, in addition to the fact that like, because they are a public institution, they don't pay taxes um to Amherst. And so this is sort of like an in-kind donation to support the, the educational goals of the four towns that contribute to the region that is located uh in part, you know, where they live.
Certainly, we can certainly reach out, uh.
Yeah, the regional committee has been trying really hard.
There's going to be a lot of people lining up to, to try to get some services, but it's certainly a great idea and I can certainly reach out and, and discuss it at the next meeting with them about where, what are our needs and, and what can they maybe help with.
Awesome.
Um, so we are, sorry, uh, principal's report is next.
Thank you so much. And I do love that idea, Shannon, that readers are leaders. So I have also shared the principal's report. I want to add one thing to it, though. Um, today, we had got to do the final um celebration for the uh Mass Cultural Grant residency that the students have been able to participate in. We had Tara Murphy and Elizabeth ironically has the same last name, Murphy, our PTO parent, um Elizabeth, really was an incredible coordinator, along with the office staff, to really make sure that this could happen. And it was, it was exceptional. The students, not only did they play the drums, the, they learned West African dance and um did some singing as well. So it was a, a really, a pretty, pretty amazing toe-tapper to end the day. Um, and so I just wanted to do, give a big shout out to that. Um, we've been having uh, doing a lot of hard work. The students are just absolutely working really hard. We see a lot of kids that are really pushing their their growing learning edge. The um, the gratitude jar is absolutely overfilling. If you have a moment to take a look at that, that's been such an amazing addition to our school and really talking about what it, um, how, how grateful we are for our community. So you all included as well, for sure. Um, so I've shared my report too. I know in the interest of time, I've, if anybody has any questions for me or wants me to speak to any of this, I'm, I'm happy to.
I just had a Yeah, I just had a quick question, Anne. Um, I appreciate you sharing the um the seats across all the grades, like I, I, um, that's really helpful to see. Um, there were just some um lines that weren't summing correctly. Um, so I wasn't sure if like, let me see, I think I wrote it down.
Oh, thirteen for kindergarten.
Yeah, like
Oh, there's ten total. Sorry, there's, there's ten total. So there should be um seven that are Chutes Berry and then um residents, three that are school choice.
Okay.
Don't worry, I can add. I will fix this. Yikes. The boiler on the brain. Oh, let me, I'll fix these after, just to make sure I don't, I don't mess anything else up. So I'll double check them. That'll be all updated.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leah, for noticing that, too.
Yeah, definitely.
All right, so Amherst Pelham, Anna, do you have a report for us?
All right. Like, oh no, my mute button. Um, so I'd, um Yeah, so I, I guess the biggest thing that we've been talking a lot about is that Delinda Dykes is coming back to work in the middle school. Um, we are complying with the court order and there so she is, we, we are required to bring her back and put her back in her same position. Um, and so the superintendent and the principal are working out plans to um ensure that everyone feels safe and accommodated and um has people to contact if they have um things they need to talk about and um we strengthened our policies to ensure that um it's clear what is expected and how to treat uh transgender students, et cetera. Um, and then the enforcement of documentation and evaluation is um going to be much stronger. Um, so that's ensuring that everybody gets an evaluation and the proper documentation is being made is part of the superintendent's goals. And we did approve the superintendent's goals for the year. Apparently, we are very, very late in doing that and we should have done that in April, but we did do that now. So hopefully Shannon's goals have been approved earlier than no, no, okay. So, uh
Or Monday night.
Okay, so we're on the same timeline, I guess. Um, we are starting to talk about budgets, but we have not yet seen a draft budget um for twenty-twenty-seven. Uh, we had a four towns meeting to talk about the um finances of all the four towns and sort of, and the, what the school is looking at sort of more generally. Um, which I think was, you know, it was, it was a good listening session. Um, it was unlike any other four-town meeting that has ever happened. Um, because it was just so much, so many towns sharing thoughts about their finances and way how they think about their finances. And so that was a little bit helpful to just get a, a base understanding of how all the four towns operate. Um I think that's, oh, I guess the track and field is still on course. Um, and can't think of anything else. Oh, the, the, the the move is, the move from, for the sixth graders is still, you know, uh, happening. Um, and they're still working out some of the details. Um, they, they have to do some redistricting to figure out where the students are actually going to go for, that are not going to the middle school, but like how they're organizing their pre-K to fifth graders has to change a little bit, so that's a little complicating. And then uh, Amherst had elections and so there's a new slate of um members who I think they don't start until January, but we will have two new school committee members. Um, and uh they've turned over a couple of their uh town council members as well. So it should be interesting to see how that affects sort of policy and how the school, school committee runs um starting next January. You have any questions? Suzie?
And um the school roof, middle school roof got its grant, correct?
Yes, the middle school roof got its grant. Um, they had said that they were going to Amherst has suggested that they want to provide some extra funding to fix the auditorium roof as the, at the same time that they're fixing the rest of the middle school roof. Apparently, the middle, the auditorium portion of the roof is like one year younger than the rest of the roof. And so therefore doesn't qualify for MSBA grants, so they can't use MSBA money for the auditorium portion. And so it's just, like financially, it's just silly because it's going to cost a lot more money to fix the roof some other time. So I do think it's a good idea for Amherst to throw some money at that just to make sure that it also gets included in the whole design. However, they wanted to ask the other towns to also contribute a little bit of money to the auditorium roof. And so I think that there is going to be an ask. I don't know that the other towns have to say yes, but I think the regional school has to ask. So just so you know, the finance committee has been asked. I don't know if they will say yes. But, yeah. I think that's a, that's the end of the roof. And then there's the high school. So you know, the high school roof is also a disaster. So next year, no, I'm just kidding. It's not a disaster. It's just in, in need of some repairs as well.
Whoever designed flat roofs on schools in New England.
I have no idea. That is beyond comprehension to me.
All right, thank you, Anna. Um, so joint supervisory committee report. I did not make it. Um, so somebody else is going to have to
I went and all I have for notes is Alabama Shakes. Do you have that, Anne? Just kidding. Um, yeah, there was a, a school committee member from Lebret who said that their son is the drummer for Alabama Shakes. And so we're going to try to reach out to that guy. I like, tried to find him on Instagram. I don't think it's the original drummer. But I think he's a studio guy sitting in, but we should try to figure that out. Anyway, um, yeah, superintendent report. Um, we talked about uh evaluation and goals. Um we talked a lot about the Hampshire Trust um issue, um, changing leadership. Uh, Caitlin gave her discussion about the budget um and the increases um and the five-point-five-two percent increase and the COLA increases. These are just my notes. Um, I didn't use Otter. I'm going to stay away from using Otter for a while. Um, Lindsay Rodriguez gave her reports. Um, yeah, and we talked, uh, LES had um Jamrog in there on just the other day. Um, I think they didn't have school on Monday.
So they had on Monday, um there was no heat in the building and the boiler was not working at six-thirty when the custodian came in. He couldn't get it working and you have to make that call really early if you're going to cancel. And so they have had their first uh snow day already.
Yeah, so we talked about that. We talked about like maybe setting up an, another m- meeting between the schools about HVAC issues and stuff like that. Um, it was a good meeting, you know, um, I'm just kind of sk- going through because we're kind of running late. Um, but, yeah. Those are some of my notes.
Thank you. Um, Anna, do you have a question?
Uh, has there been any more discussion about Irving wanting to leave?
No, they love their new superintendent.
Excellent.
I'm sure that is true.
No, they um are not even part of the regionalization study for, there's the Pioneer Gill-Monague Regionalization. Irving is staying out of that. Um, and interestingly enough, Pioneer, they are looking to redo. They have, Irving does not have a sending. They don't send their kids automatically somewhere. They have tuition agreements and most of their kids go to um Gill-Monague to Turner's Falls High School. Um, but now Pioneer would like to have a regionalization degree, a, a tuition agreement with Irving to go to Pioneer, so um, it's going to be, going to be interesting, but they are not part of it. They have not, they've not talked about it um at any meeting since I, I've been there. So I say that tongue-in-cheek, but they're, they're, they have not brought it up.
Thank you. Um, I wonder what that'll mean for Turner's Falls. Uh, so CES report. Um, Leah, whoops, sorry, Suzie.
I, I just wanted to spit in the idea that um the FinCom has set up its schedule to review budgets and we have the school committee scheduled for February tenth. Um, we will give um Caitlin questions and feedback earlier off the draft, but maybe I'll find out what draft she wants us to, to respond to. Um, and um, I don't I don't know. I sent a copy of the budget request letter that we sent to all the departments because we want everybody to understand where we're coming from. The school is always on a different sort of schedule and um and I don't know, it's, it's its own entity. Um, but I sent out that letter and I don't know if it got shared with the school committee. Um, and um, that's the FinCom's budget request letter for FY twenty-seven. And I also testified in Greenfield and I spoke mostly about our elementary school. So I will send my testimony, but I don't know where all these things get sent to. They go out.
Thank you, Suzie. Um, all right, so CES, Leah, is there anything you want to share with us? Did you have a meeting?
Yeah, so we didn't have a meeting, um, but we were, we were looking for an executive director at CES. So the job um was just posted at the end of October with an application deadline of November thirtieth. So that's coming up pretty soon. They are hoping to have interviews in January um and make a final decision by February. Um, and the next meeting is December tenth.
Okay, thank you. We should add that into the uh future business, I guess. Um, well, by the time we meet again, it will have been, so December tenth. Thank you. All right, uh, moving on to the last part of our evening, we've got our policy review. Got the first read on uh KAKI, ECAB, JJE, and KBE, which we do not need to talk about unless anyone has anything that they want to address with it on the first read. Okay. Um, seeing none, we'll go on to the second read. First vote for KBA, School Parent Guardian Relations Goal. Uh, GBEBC, Gifts to and Solicitations by Staff. KI, Visitors to the School, and I HAMR, Health Education. Um So uh, if you can get a move and then if anyone has any discussion.
I moved to um have a first vote on KBA, GBEBC, KI, N-H-I-H-A-M-R.
All right.
Second that.
Okay, does anybody have, is there any discussion that needed to be had? Great. All right, so all in favor? MayUI?
But Lanka boy.
Jack I.
Anna, you
Anna, you're muted.
Yeah, I, yes, sorry.
So it's all unanimous. Uh, final, final vote on, uh, BB School Committee Legal Status.
So moved.
Second.
All right, uh, all in favor? My UI?
Lanka by.
Jack I.
Heard I.
Okay, so that is unanimous as well. I do want to ask one question that did not end up on this agenda and I know we're running late, but I know there were some concern around payroll last meeting and we talked about the possibility of an executive session. Is that something that still needs to be addressed?
Um, if you want to address it vaguely, I just want to be clear that we haven't invited anyone. If we're going to speak about in particular people, they haven't been invited. I think we've cleared it all up as far as I'm aware, Ian. I, I haven't had any issues come to me.
We're all good.
Good. Okay, so if that needs to be addressed at some future time, we'll, we'll deal with it, but as far as we know, it's all resolved.
Yep.
So can I get a move to adjourn?
I moved to adjourn the meeting.
All right.
Second.
Right now, so I'll send that to everybody.
My UI, all you guys. Thank you.
Thanks again.
Bye-bye.